I'd like to call to order the Tiverton Town Council meeting of Monday, July 22, 2013. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, veritable, and testable world.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Gerlach.
Present.
Counselor Ruda.
Present.
Counselor Shabbett's present.
Present.
Counselor Lambert.
Present.
Counselor Rodrick.
Present.
Counselor DiMaderis.
Present.
Counselor Pelletier.
Yes ma'am.
All present.
Okay, we'll begin with the approval of the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, July 8, 2013. Counselor Rodrick and Counselor Pelletier abstained, absent. Approval of the executive session minutes of July 8, 2013. Counselor Rodrick and Counselor Pelletier abstained, absent. Receipt of minutes from the following boards' commissions: Art Council, Cemetery Commission, Conservation Commission, Personnel Board, Recreation Committee. Correspondence, receive and file. Charleston Town Council, resolution supporting municipal road and bridge revolving fund. Tiverton Conservation Commission opposing the use of landfill as staging area by RIDEM for storm-related debris. Town of Middletown resolution supporting developing of a model for a regional high school. Approval of the tax assessors' abatement. Kate MeShad, Planning Board, activities report for June 2013. Distribution of department monthly reports for June 2013. Tiverton Historic Preservation Advisory Board requesting historic district zoning ordinance for Tiverton Four Corners. Schedule for council workshop on September 30, 2013, and referred to Planning Board for informal advisory opinion by September 30. Kate MeShad, distribution information of draft comprehensive community plan update strategy submitted to Planning Board for discussion on August 6. Is there anything to be deleted?
Mr. President, I'd like to take Consent Agenda Item 3B off.
3B? Anything else?
C A 2D, please.
D? Okay. Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing else, I will entertain a motion for the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Okay. We will begin with 2D. Mr. Pelletier?
Yeah, I just, it was a matter of sort of interest when I read this. Personnel Board meeting notes. I'm just wondering if, because I'm unfamiliar with how this works, the, it seems like they're all kind of similar to what our executive session is. It's closed session. Are all of these minutes sealed? Is that how that works? And if so, is it similar to what the process we're going through now, trying to go back and unseal minutes that are, you know, of note or whatever? Because this is... Hmm? This is, this is...
That's all their, it is all...
I know, but motion to go into closed session made by James Camaro, seconded by Deborah Dupont, interviewed applicant number two, and then came back into open session.
Yeah, they go in and out of open and closed session. They give the applicant the choice of whether they want it in open or closed session.
Right.
And then if the applicant says closed session, then they close the door.
And we're, so we're back to this question of...
Yes.
They stay sealed forever?
They stay sealed what they discussed with the individual applicants, yes.
Okay, forever.
Yes, unless there's some particular reason, unless the applicant would waive the privilege or have some request to have it publicized, yes.
What is the virtue of closing minutes like that? I mean, the question is the same for us. Why, what is the virtue of keeping regular business of the town sealed indefinitely?
Well, with the Personnel Board, with the labor issues, it's the right of privacy that people have to, you know, what are hopefully frank and open discussions about their qualifications. And particularly the Personnel Board, many of these other people probably already have existing jobs.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't want their identity revealed at all if they've got necessarily other jobs. And they have a right to the privacy of what's said about them. With the council, there are more broader areas such as litigation, which is where, for the most part, you don't want it revealed because you don't want your strategy revealed. And there's a question about how much you reveal afterwards. About, the only thing that I think is really something that should be more diligently unsealed afterwards is property purchases, where we seal them before we buy it so that we don't, in fact, you know, making it public that we're trying to negotiate with someone. But once we've got it in hand, and we generally try to do that in the context of, as we're going forward with the closing, we make the closing becomes public. And then we don't necessarily keep the, we don't necessarily unseal the minutes, because even then, you get in the minutes, the minutes may revolve, say, Open Space Commission talking about, you know, three or four or five properties that they'd like to acquire, and we're going after this one right now, and you approve them going after one of the properties, you don't want, again, those other property addresses getting out there in the public because they'll get more expensive immediately.
Those are specific instances, which I certainly acknowledge, but should this be a policy of the town to seal de facto everything that we do in executive session or everything that a board does in executive session forever?
Well, as to the Personnel Board, yes, because all that the Personnel Board does is governed by that privacy interest of the people who are the applicants before them. As to other boards, I can't say until we get into it and so forth. As to the council, no, I don't think so. I think you need to look at it on a case-by-case basis, which I think you do, at the end of the night, talking about what needs to be sealed and not. And in fact, I, it's interesting you say that, because I have been looking at the older executive session minutes to see about what should be done there. Unfortunately, not a priority item with everything else, but it's definitely something that I've given some thought to. But I don't think we do automatically seal everything, and so far, most of what we've sealed, I think, probably deserves to be kept sealed.
Okay.
But in the end, it's up to you. It's up to you collectively.
Yeah.
Anything else, Brett?
Yeah, no, I guess I'll just stew in it for a while and then, no, nothing else.
Okay, I will entertain a motion on C A 2D.
So moved.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Okay. C A 3B. Mr. Gerlach.
Sure, thank you. Last week, I attended the regular monthly meeting of the Tiverton Conservation Commission, and one of the items on the agenda was a review of the RIDEM request of the town to leverage part of the landfill for use with sorting storm-related debris. It was a conversation that the town council had at our last meeting. What ensued at the Conservation Commission meeting was a very thoughtful and what I believe to be important discussion that frankly shed some new and very important perspectives on this matter. At our last town council meeting, there was no vote. It was just an update and an open discussion, and Mr. Gonzalo was going to be continuing the negotiations with RIDEM and keep us abreast of that. But I think the points raised in Chairman Ramatowsky's letter to the council, which I thought was a very succinct and well-written, excellent letter, I think warrants fresh conversation on the topic. For those folks who don't necessarily have access to that letter, a copy of which is available here, but, you know, concerns around the potential impact of this activity on private wells in the area, the potential for impact due to surface water drainage and its close proximity to the Nonquit watershed, the potential for leaks of toxic chemicals into the ground or surface water, potential issues that might come from increased truck and other vehicular traffic, to everything, you know, all of those kind of very tangible concerns to more logistical matters around who would designate, you know, that a particular storm would warrant use of this new debris sorting procedure, how long the facility would be accepting debris, so on and so forth. So whether we put this on an agenda for next time around to revisit the conversation or open the conversation here tonight, I know we have Tricia Hilton from the Conservation Commission who was present at the meeting here in case there were questions. You know, I open it up to the council, but I do think these are very important new considerations that we should take into account here. And frankly, you know, some of the precedents that are being set by DEM in our discussions around Stafford Pond, frankly, I'd hate to see, I think a lot of people would hate to see some sort of impact on Nonquit as a reservoir as well, so.
Anything else from the council?
Mr. President, yeah, I was going to say...
I was going to say, I would like this to go on another agenda.
And I've already given a copy of this letter, or Mr. Gonzalo has given Mr. Bellucci as well, a copy of this letter. Mr. Bellucci is the one that's most familiar with these discussions with DEM, and Mr. Bellucci hadn't seen the letter.
I just wrote it.
Well, no, we're not, I don't think, Mr. President wants it to move on, but I'm just going to say, I think that this may be an issue for further discussion, but we better begin bringing in more people.
Absolutely.
I read the letter, and some of the stuff was a surprise to me. But on the other hand, there were issues that I thought, other issues that could have been addressed. For example, well, then where do we put the Tiverton debris? And where do we put the debris from a, you know, a major storm, from Little Compton and Tiverton? Where do we put it for the mainland of what's the little area that we have of mainland Rhode Island here? So I mean, there's a whole bunch of other issues we'd have to discuss, and I'd be happy to join with you in putting this on an agenda.
Sure.
Actually, I'm going to request for the town clerk to put it on our next regularly scheduled meeting.
And let's just make sure that we have, you know, all interested, you know, parties there. I think it would be...
Conservation Commission.
Mr. Bellucci, sure. Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Gerlach?
No, thank you.
Yeah, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Open public forum for announcements, comments, questions. Ms. Linda Larson, Celebrate Tiverton.
Welcome.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you. Just want to give everyone a little update. Celebrate Tiverton is fast approaching, very fastly approaching. Our kickoff is Thursday evening down at Tiverton Four Corners at the Meeting House at 6:00. Everyone is welcome. Everyone from town, our sponsors, our businesses, town council, and the elected officials that like to join us are certainly welcome. The Tiverton Four Corners merchants will also be open a little late and doing a little after-hours to help us kick off our event. Friday, we will start with, at 5:30, with music on middle, so please come out and enjoy the music. And there will also be some refreshments there available that a few vendors will be selling. There'll be a flotilla from the Tiverton Yacht Club, so Lloyd Boats will come down the waterfront. And at 8:00, we'll light our bonfire on Grinnell's Beach, so we hope folks come down and bring their chairs and their blankets and enjoy our fabulous waterfront. Saturday morning, our parade will kick out off at 10:00 from Judson Street. We'll follow down Main Road all the way to Little Bear. Still time to join. Check our website out for application or to get, you know, to find a committee member if you still want to take part in that. We're certainly welcoming any and all to do that. We will then go into the evening and kickoff at Sandy Woods at 4:30 with our children's storytelling, followed up by a cookout, a Cajun dance, as well as stargazing in the upper field. Tickets are available at any Sandy Woods event, as well as their farmer's market on Thursdays, or from any community member, or again, the information is on our website. Sunday morning, a 5K at Tiverton High School. Registration is at 9:00. Registration form is available online. The run is at 10:00. And then also at 10:00, there'll be a kayak cruise on Inlet Drive in Sapawa, and signups are, people are adding to that, so if you really want to do that, there's some spaces left. If at any of the events you have a question, need information, help, assistance, we do have a tee-shirt, so it's a Celebrate Tiverton tee-shirt. On the back, it says, "Crew." There will be folks at all of the events to help and assist anyone who's visiting from out of town or any of our residents. And we'd also like to take the opportunity to thank everyone who supported us from you in front of me as town council, our police chief, our fire chief, our rec department, our administrators, all the way down the line. Everyone has been more than helpful, more than supportive, and everywhere we've gone, it's really what can we do and how can we help you? So it's really been a positive experience with how welcome and open everyone is to having this. So we look forward to bringing the community together and having the opportunity to share the experience, and we hope for great weather, which I'm sure we will have, and we hope it's a success.
Okay, well, I want to thank you and Tiverton First for working at this. I mean, it's good to see the sense of community coming back to Tiverton.
Yeah.
And let's hope this is only the beginning of more parades and more festivities in our town.
We'd love for it to grow and get back to where at least as grand as it used to be, and if not beyond that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearings and public presentations. Non-Town Council sitting as a board of licensing. Non-advertised license. Arthur Mellow doing business as Mellow's Farm Stand, the Tasty Tomato, requests approval of holiday license subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Mr. Mellow here?
No.
Nope. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the request for a holiday license to Arthur Mellow, DBA Mellow's Farm Stand and the Tasty Tomato, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
We...
If you are transparency, where is the location of this farm stand?
1493 Bugemarsh Road.
Thank you.
Oh. Hi.
I just came from my other farm stand.
Oh, come on up.
Sorry for the lateness.
I thought for a moment we were going to have an objection to tomatoes.
We haven't voted yet, so if you just, why don't you have a seat? It'll probably be easier for you. Can you tell us who you are?
So, Mr. President, thank you for having me. And I'm Laura Mellow. My husband, Arthur, and I are interested in using the property at 1493 Bugemarsh Road for sales of produce and related farm products. And we are just coming for you for the holiday sales license.
Great.
All I can think of.
All right. Any questions from the council?
Not just to confirm, the location is the old Bruce's Saw Shop.
Right.
Location.
Opposite Dunkin' Donuts.
Yes. It used to be a hot dog stand there.
Yep.
That's how I've been describing it to everybody. Are you there now selling? We are. We had gotten some approvals through the building inspector and the town clerk. We opened Wednesday. Been going well so far.
What's in season, so I can know what to stop by for?
Sweet corn and tomatoes, cucumbers, so you'll have to come by.
We will. Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome.
We have a motion and a second. Anything else from the council? All in favor? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing under D E F G. H, bids and requests for proposals. Chief Tom Blakely requests award for bid of purchase, three new police vehicles to Central Dodge of Rainham, Mass. for $80,377, one frontline police cruiser, and two 4x4 SUV vehicles.
Correct, Mr. President. I only, we only received one bid, but I made calls independently to four area dealers. And I guess the holdup was that the prices for the 2014s wasn't released from Detroit at the time. Fortunately, we could take the 2013, the leftovers, and have a savings for the town, certainly that these, not to count the rear wheel, the four-wheel drive, the all-wheel drive, approximately $7,000 savings by using the earlier model. And it can be delivered quicker, and I guess it's all-wheel drive, so it's a savings for the town. And we don't trade our vehicles in, so it matters not that different model here, so I would recommend that we go with this model.
Chief, how long does it take to turn them around once you get them? I know they have to be painted and then you have to add stuff, right?
We have to do some lettering, and electronics is the big thing. Usually, we could probably do well within one, depending on the availability of some of the technicians that are not in-house. And the other bad part about this is we have to take the color that they have. We can't get the, but they'll both match, but...
What color are they?
They're black.
Okay.
Not to let the public know yet. But I think it's a good savings for the town, and the four-wheel drives, what we want to get, and that's an additional $1,500, approximately per vehicle, so overall, we're saving around $10,000.
Good. Okay, anything from the council? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion. And this is, you have the funds based off the FTR?
Yes.
The funds are available?
Yes, they were provided by the FTR. Sorry, thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept the request of the award of bid for purchase of three new police vehicles to Central Dodge of Rainham, Mass. for $80,377, one frontline police cruiser, and two 4x4 SUV vehicles.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Chief. DPW Director Bellucci requests permission to advertise for bids for the purchase of a new Mack GU-712 six-wheeled dump truck with plow. Funds approved at FTR. Okay, before you go in, I don't want to sing dumb, but what in God's name is the GU-712?
It's just a model.
Okay. I thought it had some special function or something.
No, no, it's just a specific model of Mack, and that's how we'll advertise it, and so everyone will know. We do need some new plow trucks. Critically, the hills, the hills killed us in the last storm. We couldn't even push the snow up or down the hills. It was so heavy. We lost three of our trucks with blown-out drive shafts and rear ends, and they're getting real old, so this replacement is direly needed and would be greatly appreciated.
Do we know approximately what the range will be?
In the $200,000 range. But if it lasts 30 years like these have, the per-year cost is going to be worth it. But they're expensive. Stuff costs money now, and I was shocked, as much as you probably are, but we'll see when the bids come in, but we would expect in that range.
Steve, do you expect to get more than one bid?
I anticipate probably getting one Mack bid and then several bids from other kinds, because it seems to be like Mack in this, in any area, do not bid against one another. It's just the way they do business and the way their franchises work. So I would expect one bid for the Mack, and I would expect maybe a bid from International, a bid from here, and a bid from there with similar trucks that kind of meet most of the specs we have. That's what I would anticipate.
So Steve, will the bill, would the bid specify Mack, or will it say Mack or similar?
Yes, it's this Mack or similar, approved equal.
Yeah.
So we will have to review all the bids when they come in, see what the best deal is for the job we want done, and we'll be back to you.
Great.
Anything else from the council? Can I entertain a motion?
I move that we approve the request to advertise for bids for the purchase of a new Mack six-wheeled dump truck or equivalent with a plow.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Town Administrator, items and announcements.
Thank you. Our website, our new website, went live today.
I'm sorry.
It's obviously a work in process, but I think it's a, much of an improvement over our former website. We will continue to make strides to improve it, and anyone with any comments can certainly get them to us. We're going to have a basic computer class beginning Wednesday, August 14, from 10:00 to 12:00, for four weeks for our clerical staff. Managers will provide names. We will have up to seven per class. And these classes will continue on, you know, and after we get through the basics, they will, we will get to more difficult programs. And they are being done, they're being provided by the Essex Library. Tax payments. FY '13, the monies we've received so far total are, were 28.13%. For 2014, it's 28.60%, so there's just a slight difference. One of the things that we have introduced is automatic monthly or quarterly debits to your account. The program is working very well, and we hope to continue it and expand it. And anyone interested in journeying that program can get an application online or from the tax collector's office. We have 107 properties being noticed at the end of this month for tax sale. The next item is the local roads program was deleted from the 2014 state budget, which was $191,000. So therefore, unfortunately, we had that money planned for King Road, but we didn't get the money, so we'll have to see what other alternatives we have. And just in the way of an announcement also, the DEM shellfish program, on July 18 and 19, there were crews walking the shores of the Sakonit River and Nonquit Bay, I'm sorry, and Nonquacket Pond, and they were searching for areas or sources of pollution for shellfish. Don't know what the results was at this point. It may be continuing, but if anyone sees any strange people walking on the shore, that's what they're doing. Thank you.
Okay. I just have a question, Jim. On the 107 properties, is this an increase over the same time last year?
I'm not sure, but it will decrease as these notices go out. You know, it usually starts out somewhere...
Yeah, I know, it starts high.
High. Yeah, it usually starts out somewhere in this area, and then it gradually decreases.
I think we only had about a dozen.
Yeah, the end, yeah.
These are properties who are delinquent and paying their taxes?
For two years.
Oh, for two years. Okay. All right. Thanks, James. Hey, Town Solicitor, items and announcements. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Shabbett, please forgive me.
Thank you. The Tiverton Otis Council is holding an Otis reception this Sunday, July 28. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. Contrary to what was in the Sakonit Times, it's 4:00 to 6:00, not 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. They are sponsoring, they're hosting five Otis: Ron Windsor, Lois Marshall, Martha Terredash, Meredith Cornell, and McKinley, McKenzie Crossleys. So again, if there's beautiful artwork, they are exceptional Otis. If you could come to our reception on Sunday, it's a great time, and you can enjoy visiting us here and enjoying the artwork. Very, very enjoyable. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Town Solicitor.
Thank you. I provided you with the materials that were filed by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. We could go Friday in regards to...
Are you speaking into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
I provided you with the materials filed by the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management last Friday. They were filed on Friday. I received notice of this approximately noon time on Friday with a hearing scheduled for 2:00 p.m. This was an action by DEM to try to enjoin... This was an action by DEM to try to enjoin, stop the enforcement of the ordinance with regard to the fishing tournaments on water reservoirs, particularly Stafford Pond. I was able to get to the court in time, participate in the conference. I did offer to compromise that we would, as a town, not enforce the requirement for the insurance policy, the million-dollar insurance policy for the two policies, there are two tournaments still in July, they're done now. I said we would forego enforcement of that until September 1st, but we still wanted to collect the information about the tournaments. The Department of Environmental Management attorney would not agree to any compromise. We argued it before the judge, and with the proviso about the insurance not being enforced till September 1st, the judge denied DEM's, their motions to stop the enforcement of our ordinance. And I have been in contact with the two tournaments that were still in July, with the organizers requesting the information that we would otherwise collect in the application, and will be sending the application materials to the ones that are scheduled for September. And it's up to the Department of Environmental Management at this point when and if they want to schedule it for further proceedings. We will have to answer the complaint within probably, within 20 days of when they serve it, which will probably be tomorrow. I said that I would accept service, so that would probably be when the clock would start running.
Andy, can I just ask some clarifying points here? So, first of all, thanks for heading to court on short notice there. So if I'm hearing your comments and processing them correctly, the ordinance still stands?
Yeah.
However, we were not, we are not able to enforce the liability insurance until September 1st?
That's correct. I, it was my decision there to voluntarily waive the enforcement of the insurance for any tournament before September 1st, which was two in July. There are none in August.
And the reason why I ask that, Andy, is on page 27 of the handout here, the bottom, and, you know, I'm still trying to navigate legalese, so forgive me here, it says ordered defendant is restrained and enjoined from enforcing of Chapter 15 of the Tiverton Code of Ordinances.
Right. This is the draft order that was submitted by DEM.
Okay.
That was not granted.
Okay.
This is what he filed. We have since, he sent me an order, what's today, Monday? Sent me an order on Friday, which more accurately reflects what the judge proposed, but I still didn't think was accurate. I asked, it was in PDF, I asked him to send me a Word version so that I could revise it. So we are still working on what the language of the actual order will be.
Okay.
But this was just what he wanted from the judge, not what he got.
Okay.
But I can, I can see the confusion. It looks like, oh, here's the order.
Sure, yeah.
Not granted.
Sure.
And I never saw this until after I got there.
Just, just a couple other comments. I, you know, I think it's, you know, I think it's unfortunate that this has transpired. When we made several efforts to communicate the final ordinance to the director's office, in my correspondence to her, really took the time to point out that the revised ordinance reflected the good work that had been done by this cross-functional working group, myself, Tricia Hilton from the Conservation Commission, and folks from the DEM. And frankly, we revised it and took a lot of things out, and what remained reflected the open issues that were still outstanding in this working group, and frankly were, you know, important safety nets for us to have in there until such time that we could work with the DEM to find some mutual resolution there. So, you know, my own two senses that, you know, I find this activity to be unfortunate. You know, conversations with the DEM continue. We, in fact, had a meeting today at the boat ramp with myself, Mrs. Hilton, folks from the DEM, and some representatives of a nonprofit known as Save the Lakes. And what they did is they walked us through volunteer-based invasive species kind of protection programs to give us an overview of what might be possible if we were to go down that road of trying to institute our own volunteer-based invasive species kind of inspection program. And that's all well and good. So, you know, I think we have made great strides to continue to work with them. This sort of, kind of, response is troubling to me, so.
I just find it very ironic that it's the RIDEM trying to stop us from protecting the water supply.
And.
It's totally backwards.
And calling our action arbitrary and capricious to boot.
Not that they would ever do anything of such.
Well, hopefully it's just a blip on the path of cooperation, but we'll, we'll see as it goes forward.
Anything else from the council?
I just want to note that we had received correspondence from DEM back on March 29th, 2013, basically threatening to sue us if we adopted the ordinance. And that was prior to it being watered down. The council has copies of that, but we kept that as private and did not release it publicly, trying not to inflame things. But since the suit's been filed, I've now, upon request, released that as a public document.
Absolutely.
You got a copy, and it's available if the public wants it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
I don't have a question.
Okay. Councilman Lambert?
Pursuant to Rhode Island general laws, I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Chapter 42, Section 465A 6, Ray prospective business or industry for the industrial park.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor? Motion carries.
And remain in executive session pursuant to Chapter 42, Section 465A 2, Ray litigation relative to the Secconnet River bridge tolls.
Second.
A motion and second, all in favor?
And remain in executive session pursuant to Chapter 42, Section 465A 2, Ray litigation, Town of Tiverton versus James and Melissa Pelletier.
Second.
Motion, all in favor?
And remain in session pursuant to Chapter 42, Section 465A 1, Ray building official Gareth Ames personnel performance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And remain in executive session pursuant to Chapter 42, Section 465A 1, Ray town administrator James Goncalo personnel performance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in executive session.